I was already in time. All right.
All right, we're going to reconvene. The meeting of the founding council. Date in October seventh, twenty twenty five. Does everyone have a chance? Now, let's sign this and then we budge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In surrender with all due diligence, one of the issue for our God individual with liberty and justice. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes on the September eighth, twenty twenty five meeting? And are there any corrections? Or additions that we can make?
I think. There's notice at the bottom that said that the most many hours said five point four.
And it didn't say August, did it? Okay, now get a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Jeff. Fisher, may I get a second?
Okay.
Second by Denise Rutter. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, so I think the six.
It was the one last week.
Yeah. No, I got the. The twenty ninth. The twenty nine.
Should be the September twenty ninth meeting.
It should be the twenty ninth. Whoops. So Jim wasn't at the. Jim or Dudley. Right.
So is Jim and Dudley, you were asked for the twenty nine meeting.
Yes. Yeah.
We're correcting that to the twenty nine.
Yeah, okay.
And then. You had a correction.
It's the next meeting, so.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got that all situated. Motion and second still in play. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reported collections as submitted. Did everyone have a chance to look at those? Are there any questions or concerns in regards to those collections?
I'm going to acknowledge your report.
Motion was made by Dudley Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Todd Hay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven out. Department day reports. The one and only.
Good.
Good evening.
I don't know if. Know that often. We have. I don't want to mention the nations, but I have two individual boys that got pretty significant medical issues. One of them is very significant. Probably be in hospital for a while. The other one's got surgery coming up. So we could break those two as for all of us through this process. And through the budget. Jeff and I are working very, very hard on trying to. Keep the cost down. But we're trying to make sure we can provide the most to the community. Also enough trust to provide that, so. Still want to put a pretty string on a budget. Especially in part time with my. Our time Jeff and I are going to have shifts too. So. I would mention names, but if you wanted to, I can tell you afterwards. If I were the one to say the names, just like they're. Pretty significant medical issue with my being on. For all of us and they had, that's what we did.
What special do I need in at least?
It was. Well done, parameters. One, probably. You're, I mean, he's got some sort of, he'll be okay, that was. First thing. It's gonna be a long term. No, it was on the new track. I think he did tell me, I don't know, maybe I didn't tell you, he did reach out. Two weeks ago, our truck was supposed to go on. Be done, I think the third week of September, they were telling me I should have it by the end of October.
That's the review.
That's the review.
Where are we at on ambulance ordering?
So it's kind of. I think it's kind of we talked about, you know, and the vice side of it. We need to look at. Seriously to do the that source well program, the contracting company to source well for the side. Company which will help us. Streamline and do the. The bidding process. Probably right now. I would say the ones that will come, there will be where to be available January, February, we're going to make those amazing. Late fall possibly, we'll be pricing for two sets of. Big bills, you know, like in early, in early of the year and later in the year. So we could probably. Either that or maybe early twenty twenty seven on this app work. And those are those prebills, where everyone was telling you, that's the prebills. So if we go to a true custom build, like. Do this best, if you all have. We're looking to have the results. But if we do the prebuild. We can make small modifications to it and it will still be okay. We can get those a lot quicker. So. That's kind of where we're at. I'll talk with Aaron, you, A W and Tim. See if we can move forward with the source well program. We already utilize it in county. Jason uses it right now to purchase equipment. So it works well for him. He can test and he can tell you about it. But I talked to other organizations, a lot of organizations have been going through that and utilizing it. Takes a lot of headache out, a lot of man hours out, a lot of expense. Keeps our spins still.
You can get.
Yeah, we get the order and it gets streamlined, just see.
Can we get a list of all the vehicles?
I'll just. Put it together, obviously, you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that, absolutely.
Perfect. Does anyone have anything else to add?
Running, I have the John, when you get the budget, I got a few things. Some adjustments that I can tell you about as we did budget here in my list of all my talk on and I got my deal.
Okay.
Do you need any questions to me? Like I said, I can tell you afterwards, who it is, I just kind of like to keep it.
Yeah.
Private or Kelly can.
Yep.
I didn't, I, I can use. And that's how I just, I. I just want to make sure you guys understand what I'm at with my budget. We're trying to harvest, do what we can with it. We're trying everything we can, I mean, we're saving some in overtime, but. It's got shit lived in parts of it. I would throw a whole beat, figures across, don't have an additional. But. They have to be back in our mind, we need to work back to Kim and I are talking. We need to try it off so we know the timeline in there. Care for that, that we don't be past that timeline, we ask them, we're short on money.
But they didn't pay while they're on.
Yes, because they have, they have through time. Yeah, so they will be paid and it'll be all straight time. So there won't be any overtime on there. Where are the challenges you're running into with this, as I explained, I think to these and budget? So their. Their base was bigger on forty hours. So. That's a certain, that's like. Medics may have just off the top of my head, forty hours, twelve forty. Okay, if they're off. One day in that week. Now, if they work the next day or another, that week they worked two, let me phrase. They'll get paid forty eight hours straight time. So when you take forty eight times their power grade, it's going to be more than twelve forty. All right, now. Theory, we can take the overtime money and try to offset some of that. You know, a little bit. And help that, you know, but. It's, it's very close on the numbers. And that's, that's always a rule, it's just they have to be paid that forty eight hours straight. And where we get into challenges is the week where they work three days. Our schedule of work, we did the seventy two hours restricted. So that's, that's the challenge that we're running into. So then when we figure all that out. That's actually almost more than make. Pretty close to one of the monthly people to work. So that's where, that's the challenge we're running in, we're running into is with that money. So. We'll keep it, we'll keep it close line, I'll keep the guy updated, but that's.
Maybe you can't help it.
Well, I don't know what we're thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll talk about it on the.
Almost feel like I need to ask Amy, does she have anything with your appointment? Okay, let's go ahead with the health department bids. The commissioners have. Voted to accept Donovan's destruction bid for how much is that worth?
My mind double check it off.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions in regards to that bid?
What's to do all that inside, so.
There works really good.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept that bid?
Where's it coming out of?
Oh, that's right. That's what we need to talk about.
So we talked about. The. We had that Oklahoma balance making spend eleven sixty million. That's forty three thousand one seventy six eighty. I'll never ever get any money from that. So if we can, I know and believe health department has to have a state to do this. From easier to. Jim, if we get that account done easier.
Well, it's all that.
And then the rest can come out of the health department, but we will have, you will have to advertise. This one's, we'll take it out of the doubt, which that. They don't have that permission, we not, that's our decision, because that's. County tax based. They have maybe eight thousand and.
Jenny's on. Jenny is on. Jenny.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Hello?
There's Jimmy.
I'm, I'm, I can.
Did you hear us talking about how to pay for the health department instruction?
With the health. Maintenance fund?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I did.
Yeah, I did forgot. What are your thoughts on that, Jenny?
Is that our only option? Because I will have to double check to make sure that that is allowable for the services. Those were not things that we had used previously. So I will have to double check with the state to make sure that that is allowable.
Okay, if they allow it. We'd like to do that.
Okay. So we have a. With Dr. Hessler and I have a meeting with. Or we have a health board meeting in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So we can discuss that.
Okay. Then the remaining would come out of. The. The health fund, which would be number. Set eleven sixty one W, eleven fifty nine.
You say there was a. Oh. You know, the only thing concerning me on that. Health fund, I haven't, I was supposed to have my notes from last year. And we. But. Point oh one. Property tax on health, point oh one, we moved to general, point oh one, the capital development, but that. Your money is coming into the health of property taxes. We can find that out. Go with that thing. That's how we voted to. On property taxes, but for some reason, when we got our settlement. On May property taxes. Health, which we started out with a million dollars in there, which. We're going to be all right. For three, three years, but we got to make sure that we're getting some property tax, but in that. Eleven fifty from the.
I was thinking a couple of years ago, that was decreased for some reason and reallocated to another fund.
Yes, we did. There was over. In there, so we, we changed, it was point oh three, we changed it to point oh one. And put point oh one in the general, kind of general, because. That was receiving less money than we were spending to put point oh one into capital development. It was still left point oh one in there, but yet. For some reason, it did not, the state didn't, I don't know, they didn't approve it or want it, you know, the app, so. There was actually no property taxes in twenty twenty five. That's going to go into the health department thing. Now, that twenty seven, fifty thousand has come in so far this year as soon as. Yes. The money that's collected. Fees collected by the health fund, so. That's the only money that's going to come in the health department this year. I mean, Jim, where it's got a healthy balance, but. That won't last forever.
So I guess we can make this contingent upon approval from the state.
Yes.
Does that mean they have a way forever that's playing start along the base, along with the.
Because she would, she would, and she would like to have her meeting with the health department, which is in a couple of weeks on the twenty first, is that correct?
Yes, I think so.
All right, so we'll do the work on the health department and then go on. So we've got time to give approval for all of this.
We'll probably take a draw first, but then we'll pay the balance and we're done.
Yeah, but probably like. Thirty to half, fifty percent of. The total.
Have we heard, I'm sorry.
Have you heard Jenny, would they like to start?
When I spoke with Scott, he said that he's going to get a list of things to walk through this week to get his list started on what he can go ahead and purchase, but he did not give me a date. But I will follow up with that.
Okay.
So we're going to come and start finding out. And just we've got to advertise that we'll go to a.
Right, well, they voted to accept Donovan.
Yeah.
In vote to.
Because this is going to have to be an additional, so they're.
Right, we have to vote for that and then you have to ask, so how about we just table this? Until. So. Yes.
How soon, how soon will you favor in the here for a mistake?
I can reach out to them tomorrow and then. It just depends on their workload at the moment. But I'll definitely get out to them tomorrow.
Okay, and then you'll have to have a conversation with the board on the twenty first and, and Dr. Bestler.
Correct.
So it'll be after the twenty first.
And if I hear something sooner, I can let you know. If you have the joint meeting next week, if I can get any kind of decision before then, which I'll try to push for and then. And go from there.
Okay, because we'll do the, the ten day notification on the additional.
That's true, yeah.
I want to be there to work. I know. Yep. Okay, can I get a motion to table?
Sure.
Jim, McKee. May I get a second? Seconded by Todd Hay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, seven out. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Okay, our B Z A appointment. Due to the resignation of Dave Filippo, who is the council appointee for the B Z A. We have a gentleman who is interested in being on. And filling that appointment. His name is. Ruben Spicer. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint. Ruben Spicer as the council representative to replace Dave Filippo.
Then we made the motion, may I get a second? Jimmy Key seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye, seven out. Gov connection E, the server quote, does everyone have a chance to look at the server quote? Any questions or comments on the server quote, it's for three servers, I believe our servers are seven. I think they're seven years old, I think, seven to ten years old, something like that. Brad Keller looked into. Getting some quotes on those servers, he was actually able to save seventeen thousand dollars plus or minus. On those three servers.
I'll make the motion that we. Get with his support.
Todd made the motion.
What? Is it coming out of, do we have to advertise?
Thirty, thirty four or thirty six.
Yeah, it's like.
Thirty.
Thirty six, six. You change?
So are there many already mentioned or do you have to do a petition?
We're probably going to have, I don't know.
Do we all approve? Process.
I would think it would, yes.
I'm sorry.
We don't have many votes, they'll, it's going to have the. The articles that are listed. And then. But if we do that, money, but we really don't think that's.
We don't need them, as long as they just know.
Well, I thought we discussed that and I can't remember.
I can't either, I know we talked about it, but.
We don't, we don't have any bad kind of money here, but I just. But I wanted to. After the council.
Okay, equipment under council.
Equipment, you have a hundred and fifty thousand.
Can we use that?
You have a.
Fun, anything but. For the court. Any, yeah, improvements other than. Well, it might be, yeah, it might be. Are we getting more storage, that would be improvement.
Yeah. Equipment. Hundred and fifty thousand, sure.
He has coming out of there.
Nothing.
There's a hundred and fifty five in equipment.
Hundred and fifty five now.
Hundred and fifty, yeah. And we haven't taken, use that.
Who else use that, and you don't have to vote on this, so. We can strike that from the. Agenda. Any public comment, Miss Heinem? Oh, okay. Where's Carol?
I know.
We're missing Carol the money.
I don't.
And I was just. When it was, yes. She, she probably felt so you know. Okay, real quick, does the council have any comments or concerns, questions that they may have, we need to discuss?
So did they, did they put some? Did they put?
Todd made the motion, but then we stopped.
I think we're going to strike it. Yeah, you need to withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion to.
Purchase the servers?
DC. Sorry, Brad.
Did they put any volume A C C closed?
Yes, Dane Phillips.
Dave Phillips.
I think he'll be on both, is that correct? B Z A and the A C C. Yes.
Slightly get upset.
Dave goes, talking close to Jimmy. Proximity.
You guys, they come together. Well, with, with the, with this letter, basically, we should.
That's great. That's great.
I got nothing.
All right, we're going to. Reconvene the budgetary this. Yes, please. I mean, with the three eight month, starting right.
You need to get up.
Yeah, I need to. Everybody knows, I, I like. I like spreadsheets, so I made those up.
We're going to.
Yeah, you're going to get tired of all of you, but.
That's okay.
First one shows. All the different funds that we can, we collect from, from. I do six years, so there was two thousand nineteen to this year. To see how. The funds have been increased and the ones that have decreased. Last six years. And the second one. Shows what we started each year, our balance. From twenty two through now. Our county general has gone up every year. About the last ten years until. Last year and then dropped to half a million dollars. From. Twenty four to twenty five. So I have. Listed what? Balances. And then the last one is just. It's going to show you where we started. And each one of our funds on January. First of this year. What our budget is for twenty five. What we've done in additional so far this year. What our income is. This year from January through October first. And the estimated income. From October to December. And the last column shows you what our balance will be on January first to twenty six. If everybody spends all the money in their budget. If everybody spends all the money in their budget, what you're gonna see is almost a two million dollar drop in our county general if all the money is spent. That's the biggest problem. So this you can kind of look at where we will be on January first of twenty-six and look at the budget proposals for next year. And that will help us tell on them to be sent out, they wanted to know if we were going to be okay with the LGF, but you can see like our NVH, if they spend all their budget this year, we're gonna be in the hole January one, so we've got to look at what our estimated income next year is and we can't budget more than that or DLGF is gonna come back to us like they did a couple of years ago and say you got ten million dollars or so. We're gonna have to look at those things really closely. Then the last I want to give you, and I have not run this by Ethan, but I typed up an ordinance for us to do a one-time transfer with the journal semblance allowed us to do on our special lift. And I think I've covered everything that the legislature asked to be on this, but again, I'm gonna give Ethan a copy of this, let him look it over and if he's okay with it, this is an ordinance that we can do uh either later this month. We can uh buy proposals that we transfer seven point five million dollars from special lift to the county general, which can only be used for the ambulance department. That will take care of our budget for a little while if we we do that. And if you see something needs to be changed in this ordinance, let me know. I've got phone on the computer and I can make it change this and even they have uh some changes that he might want estimate. The only thing I read in the amendment, it said that we had to re-vote on the special lift rate. And it's kind of a gray area, whether it's means we have to do a special vote on that special lift or I put it in this ordinance that we uh that it remain at the point five five and because we don't know what the economy is gonna happen and we need to make sure we have enough to pay that two million dollars bond payment every year for the next two. Seventeen more, um sixty more years. Do you look over that, any questions? But this, the one on the showing what we had on the balance January point six is relatively important, but look at and make sure we don't budget more than what and we're gonna have in that fund. Or DLGF will come back to us and say you gotta make cuts. You don't wanna have to do that after you pass the budget. Now, they're not going to on county general only because we've got a healthy balance. And they can never come back to us and say you've got to make cuts, but you know, we we take the two million dollars hit this year and we're gonna have to really think of part of what's gonna happen down the road. Um reassessment fund, they're not gonna do anything to that uh because got a healthy balance in there. And the health department, we've got a healthy balance, but uh we gotta look hard at that. NVH restricted NVH. I think one of the roads and streets were were pretty good shape and our Q bridge, you did increase that uh it uh we should have one and a half million dollars in that starting January first, I don't know what his budget was for bridge next year, but I think that will be okay, but the NVH and NVH restricted are gonna be two of them, we're gonna look at very closely and probably of the safety. See that we should be okay. In capital development. We also have to look at what was advertised because we cannot may have extra money and in capital development, but we can't do a budget more than what was advertised by the law here. Yeah, so we, if we have additional next year, those are the funds we need to look at spending our additional out of since we do budget more money this year.
Dudley on season. So the additional we took out was for the uh trail.
Yes.
That we're not gonna use all that money, so is that a little bit?
So, right, so we will have, you know, that will be what was a hundred?
One seventy-five.
Five, so you know, that will have probably fifty thousand more if we spend it all. Um.
If we had spent it all.
Yes, if we do spend all that was budgeted, now what we need to do on that, because one of the paint, we haven't paid that January for this year.
We we budgeted out of seated.
In March, I think, in March.
We voted in April to approve to pay it, but they never sent us an invoice.
So, right.
And we got the invoice. Um and they invoiced actually for twenty-five and then twenty-six.
So my suggestion is that that's already been approved is to pay it at twenty-five and then in December, we do it to the conference. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So and then that, you know, then we don't have to worry about that.
Exactly.
Exactly, just we can cover that side and then
Okay.
And then made them January sixth, so we will have additional.
In that.
Yes, if already spent, we'll have some additional and I don't think we've really budgeted, budgeted for next year. So we need to, so that we can use. Actually in whenever you get and we get a spreadsheet like this for the twenty twenty-six. But like it has all our totals that we have. But I understand those and
Oh, yeah.
Because we need to know what the totals are. But be able to know where we need to add.
Or because we decided to make our good amount.
Yes.
Just go ahead and do it with what they asked.
Yes, yes, we're lucky. That's a request star and then we know. For that, we will know. You know, like the agent circuit should end up many dollars to the MBAs is gonna be in the hall. They spend all of them.
Okay.
Okay, the Q bridge is their interventional request for next year is one point six million. Well, we're gonna start the year with one point five and they spent over a bit this year, so. We can live with this. If we don't see anything, we can be bad and DLGS, DLG, that will not gonna make us better than. Well, we're in roads, their requests is five point three. They're gonna end up with four sixty-eight. It's like we have about three hundred and thirty thousand here, so.
They're not doing my time.
Yeah, I'm gonna be okay with that. But NVH restricted is two point four million. Started with one million. And we had, it's like at about one point six million, we did ourselves. It should be okay on on that, if we, I believe the dollars. Energy age.
That is.
Four eighty-one or four eighty-two reference. And one million, that's right, so. Two point six and anyway, allow us. I'd like to tell us what that happened million dollars.
Well, he budgeted five hundred thousand for community crossings, but it's only gonna be three oh nine, I think he said, around three oh nine.
Things on there.
Oh, Jason is.
It was going to be three ninety for our match, council.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, he was supposed to be five forty for that. That's a hundred and fifty difference. Um yeah, NDA is under on page eight fifty-six, when he says county manager. So is that five forty on county match out of NVH, Jason, is that just for the community crossings? Fifty-six.
Yes, I'm sorry, that that five forty should just be for the community crossings match amount.
Yeah, I'm restricted, but I think about half a million.
Oh, is it? I thought that was.
I'll say that five forty is under county highway.
Yeah.
And still have that for what? Pretty tiny or whatever, but it's the NVH goes to be next free page. One million. Three point one million. And if I named that in the whole, so. Five, five hundred. If we spend all of our duties, we will be sharing that.
So I guess we can get that back then to three ninety instead of what it was. What we got on to is he said, um, Mr. Dylan.
Five forty that you wanna drop the code back to the best, which we said.
Eighty-six, and that is the county match for the community crossings. So.
Change that, that's.
But it doesn't change what we need to change.
So, but damn, we use always thought it's good, we decide with funds, if we can use the match, always thought they cut down the county general.
Well, they budgeted, we budgeted one fifty last year. Mm-hmm, one fifty. And then we took out a county general, the remaining.
Okay. I don't find.
And they never lost and DLGF never mocked at it.
Okay. I always thought that they're not use the highway sign for the match, but the candidates, that's great.
And law.
County general has already always been our match up until a couple of years ago when we were asked to put that portion into our budget.
Okay, and DLGF is okay with that or state board accounts?
They have not said anything to myself and I haven't heard anything from anybody.
Okay, so on page fifty-six under county manager, four four nine four five, we're gonna take that five forty and we'll take it to three ninety. I know that does not help us in the other fund that we need to take money from, but it'll help us anyway in the overall picture.
Sir, any employees under the NVH, can we move to NVH?
Are you asking me, Dudley?
Yes.
Um I'm sure we can probably uh move a move a couple if that, if Kim and I can sit down and figure that out, yeah, we could probably move a couple into that. Or however many we need.
Which would be supervisor of the second term, yes.
Or.
Or labor.
Part-time, maybe we can move part-time.
Can we take the bridge repairs or both um budgets? The NVH has fifty thousand and restricted us hundred and seventy, since we decreased uh county match by hundred and fifty, can we add that if we the bridge refills now? Then take it out of non-stripped. We put down a hundred and fifty. Now we can't increase the budget, we can move. On page fifty-six, we would make about hundred and seventy thousand, two twenty. On page sixty-one, we would get really about fifty thousand.
Okay, so we are taking from NVH, page sixty-one?
Page sixty-one, get rid of that bridge repairs, seven two thousand. That's zero.
Okay.
And then on the NVH restricted, freeze, thirty-one, the two you said. On one seventy, two one. So we're not paying any, it's no change in virtue, but
This is shipping, shifting and shifting. Is there any other reductions you wanna make on page sixty-one?
Well, I think it's that we can move uh laborers hard time or in some overtime, put some of that into the NVH restricted. If you do that to a little bit, add some of that maybe.
We also take the enterprise lease run one sixty-five thousand on page sixty-one and put it to the enterprise lease right off on the shifting.
Yeah, I'm not really for sure why we have two locations for the enterprise rentals. Um I I I'm not really for sure why that was done that way.
I'm using up that hundred and fifty, that trying to use up that hundred and fifty thousand to see the county match, just moving it over. Budget states.
Thirty thousand. Just one, I mean, it's just sixty-five thousand whole, like that enterprise. Jason, that sixty-five thousand whole, it's not a hundred and thirty thousand.
It was, it was around, I believe, a hundred and eleven or a hundred and fifteen thousand for the leases.
And whether that one is.
Well, the graders are one eleven. And then air price with sixty-five on NVH. And. Is that, is the, is the enterprise lease in that end?
I thought the that ADA compliant, you guys, I thought that. They more of a council, we feel pay that out of highway funds. That what they told us.
Oh, I was gonna shoot that there, yes, you're right.
They told us we couldn't put that in the highway budget, and that correct, Jason?
That's what I was told and I was also told to just leave it in there and if we had to remove it, we would for this year.
Okay. I thought we hadn't paid that out of.
Yes.
We weren't a hundred percent sure where we were gonna. Take it.
We can put it in county general, but cannot be designated for certain, any person to do. It's ADA compliance for the highway department, so they can receive grants, it's part of their grant application, they have to have it. In order to apply for any type of grant, am I correct in that, Jason?
Yeah, any type of federal grant, we have to have um just paperwork showing that we are titles uh title six and ADA compliant.
They uh state hours said we can't pay it out of their budget.
And we have to take taxes out.
Yeah.
It can't be a flat stipend to two thousand dollars. But if we pay that out of county general. Currently, right now, Tina does it. And I personally don't know why Tina was designated to do it, I don't know.
Oh, Joe let her offer to do that.
Okay, so she picked it up and she became, okay.
She took when Joe retired, because Joe was the ADA compliance officer. He uh.
And so she just assumed that same role when she took on that position, okay. So. Should this highway secretary be doing that since it's for their department? No, it stayed out in general because that's how, that's how it was Tina.
Yeah, I'm not for sure if it's just limited to the county highway department or if it's countywide, I'm not really for sure on that.
I don't know either.
The camera, who's seen that?
I I've never, no. I mean, but we, I can find out for sure.
Okay.
But I don't really know much, yeah.
Let's strike that because we know we can't pay it out.
Yeah, take that out.
We're getting rid of it, we're gonna put a line through it, that two thousand dollar ADA plan on page fifty-six. Because we know we can't pay it out of county general, I mean, out of the highway department, so.
Enterprise. You pay like a hundred and fifteen, hundred and sixteen.
Okay, so that is, that's roughly, those figures are correct, it's divided each for enterprise.
And it would get moved, I think needs to ask, it will get moved some of that from. Not endleaged to the restricted to move out of that endleage. But I don't know what the rules are percentage-wise between. To restricted and. In non-restricted, it'd be. Fifty, that's fifty, fifty, or it would put it all there, that would be great, but I don't. I don't know what the rules are, because there's a state on. Do you know, Jason?
I do not know, I just know that we must use fifty percent of our restricted budget.
For the lease rentals?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, total budget for the year, we just, we have to use fifty percent of that budget, that MBH restricted.
So we try to make that enterprise lease. Hundred and thirty thousand, I'm fixing to say since zero.
So on page.
Fifty-six.
Page sixty-one, we're gonna strike that sixty-five and add it to page fifty-six, is that what we're doing? So line item, page sixty-one. Lease rental enterprise, we're gonna strike that.
Yeah.
And we're gonna add that sixty-five to page fifty-six. Lease rental. Which would make that one thirty. Right, so we moved sixty-five plus fifty, we moved a hundred and fifteen, so we've got another. Thirty-five we can move. Darn it, if you move the two overtimes over there, it's, it's open, but it's thirty-six, ninety-four. Can't do that.
Just make it thirty-five thousand.
True. So let's move. Let's move all the overtime on page sixty-two, which is eleven ninety-four. And then on the other one. Which would be page sixty-one.
I look, we just made sixty-one move.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do that, yeah, let's do that.
Oh, that creates a new.
Yep, that's perfect. So the fifty-five, six oh six, we'll just reduce by thirty-five and add it to.
A thousand six oh six. And then put thirty thousand, create a new line and.
So I guess it'd be eleven three oh whatever.
Overtime, what's that?
And yeah, overtime.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I'm going to go on the line.
And that's on page fifty-six and we're gonna make that twenty thousand six oh six, right?
Yes, that's overtime thirty-five thousand, you have the.
Page sixty-one.
That's all we can leave and.
Right, so on page sixty-one, we're making that overtime in thirty-five thousand, is that correct?
Yes. I have the morning, can you do that too?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on sixty-one, under overtime will be thirty-five thousand. Or no, it'll be twenty thousand six oh six, right?
What I.
I had it right.
Yeah.
And then on page fifty-six, we're gonna make that twenty thousand or thirty-five thousand. Overtime, I just made it eleven three ten.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. In my book, that's what I can be now. Okay, so on fifty-six, we're gonna have a new line item overtime for thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
And then on page sixty-one, we're reducing that one by thirty-five thousand and making it twenty thousand six oh six. Okay, so we do that.
So you say a hundred and fifty thousand on page sixty-one.
Yep. On page sixty-one. So instead of that being ten, sixty-six, four, sixty-four, has some to. So on page sixty-one, that total for twenty-six requested, I have nine sixteen, four sixty-four.
Maybe on page sixty-two. They have a repair, we make. Two hundred and ten thousand. That's it, because it'll be means that we can do additional. Funds, but. Give us one sixty-five thousand.
Five thousand for gas knocking to.
So that's uh.
So the corrections on this one is gas and oil on page sixty-two, gas and oil to three twenty-five. And keeping other repairs and maintenance at two ten. All in agreement?
Maybe with on page sixty, the equivalent. Yeah, so. Which I don't know is a big dollar.
Was that the dumb truck?
Yes.
See what they say.
See what they say, but now that's a fact, that's.
Is.
Sign up salary is.
No, I don't think.
They tracked down suggesting for that, but just especially to.
Oh, I don't know. That was weird though. The suggestion was to track the refreshment as one of the two.
That would be fair.
Three hundred and two thirty.
Yeah.
And then I think wait till we see what we decide on salaries and so. Of social.
Right.
Might be close to.
That's a difference of forty on the. So that's.
Thousand five, I think, two nineties.
I did that there, yeah. Because that makes that column total four thirty-one, nine thirty-five.
Then I think that might slide into DLGF for others. And we're off a half a million, they're absolutely gonna tell us that it's very. Turn a thousand off and they don't know for sure how much of this year's budget he spent.
Right.
Might slide by.
Right. I like how they do these audits, right, before everybody approves a budget because they know the figures. So MBH restricted eleven seventy-three and four thousand.
So I think. I think that's all I had in with this sheet, I think.
So I have a new total on page fifty-six. Two million, three hundred, two thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. Well, we had, we took a hundred and fifty off and then another fifty, or no, I think we added on, excuse me.
It shouldn't be the same, I think we actually took.
Yeah, you're right. Right.
We just took off a hundred and fifty, go ahead.
Right. See, I should have ordered that using. Okay. And the contractual services, he told me on page fifty-three, he told me that went up because of the new. Basically, the new pricing on the USI.
That's a huge amount.
Yeah, am I right, Jason, on that?
Thirty-seven.
Yes, we, we have some more projects coming up that we were just budgeting for and just putting that in for next year. As far as another federal aid bridge. Uh, a couple, we're, we're trying to stay a year ahead on our. Priority bridges, so we had to get two of them prepared this year. Uh, as far as drawings and engineering fees go, and so next year we should be ahead, but it's just the engineering fees. On things and what we're trying to do with. Our bridges, our roads, that's, that's why it went up, the fees, that's this, these are numbers I've gotten from uh USI for our projects for next year.
That was the presentation they gave us.
Correct.
And then the increase on the equipment went from. Fifteen to forty, there's a twenty-five thousand dollar difference there.
We were speaking about a finished roller possibly.
Yeah.
At our last meeting.
Yes, page fifty-three. And then when you, when you look at page thirty-eight, everyone, I think that's a page, ten thirty-eight. The consulting fees, those were moved from contractual services to this line. The consulting fees, those were moved from contractual services to this line. So that's why there was an increase there.
You know, we could actually move some of that. Gas and oil. From. M V H into their local roads and streets because. But it's like five twenty-three, what it would have. But I did, we're gonna have close to five hundred thousand. Starting the year.
Year.
We'll get three hundred. Three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Three hundred twenty-five thousand next year. But it actually, what do you even?
Maybe.
Seventy thousand.
And another fifty.
Uh huh. Take that three twenty-five to two seventy-five, up this gas and oil under the local roads and streets to. Sixty-five thousand.
That would make that look better.
Oh, no, we won't go with that. Because we only advertise five.
Five twenty-three.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that won't work.
No.
So we need, next year, we need to make sure we advertise. Add this local roads and streets. Three hundred thousand more. You know, take some of that in P H. Like. People can't. Now we can't prove it was horrible. It's five twenty-three, seven oh nine, once you average.
Well, we're in streams.
Oh, sorry. Or we remember that for next year.
Yeah, I made a note.
We need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could add some of those, like in Tampa, well, stuff and. Like that, right? It moves things, other calls and.
So back to page thirty-eight, under bridge inspection. This has now been cycling to federal, am I right, Jason? That's what I had in my notes.
The increase, the increase for the, for the. Bridge inspection is because it's a new cycle, all one hundred and forty-one bridges will need to be expect, inspected this year. For our new cycle of. Rotations. And federal highway has changed how the engineers, this is not just U S I, but engineers across the state. Were federally. Look at the bridges and how they inspect them, which increases the consultants and the engineers' fees. Because they're a little, a little more in depth, so that's the increase, that's why it's that much.
So a six hundred percent increase in. Bridge inspections and. Three times as much on consulting fees.
Consulting fees is not just for U S I, that was for, you know, our engineer, if it was Roger Azar. Whoever it may be now, just in case we had. We've used him, you know, for, for certain things that we. We needed. So that was just an increase for that. The bridge inspection is going phases, so this would be phase one of the new bridge cycle. The phase one A would be a little less, phase two would be. About the same as phase one, and then phase two A would drop down significantly. That's a four-year cycle.
So we're, this is the start of the next four-year cycle then.
Correct. And I don't know these numbers when we go to our choosing of the U S, or the consultants. That's what myself and Travis and, and Jeff Fisherow and Aaron did when we graded our, we got proposals and we, we graded the consultants. Then we enter into a contract with them, so I do not know the number until we enter into a contract with. And the consultant.
Anybody see anything else that they would want to take away? All right, we take about a five-minute break.
Are we done?
I, I didn't see anything else. If there's anything else.
Hey, Jason.
Yeah, go ahead.
So do you live now with the queen?
I, I do, yes, yes, it's.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, yeah, she was, she was very happy, she was, we're very proud of her, so I appreciate that. It did not go to her head, though, so that's a good thing.
That's where I was headed, yeah. So she doesn't want, she doesn't want a new car or something like that?
No, no, just pay for college, that's all we gotta worry about right now, so.
Okay, Jason, I think we've got you all sorted for right now.
Okay, thank you very much. If you need anything, just let me know throughout the week.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I'm sorry.
All right, you know, reconvening. The budget meeting. Let's look at the ambulance department. About a county general towards the bottom. Reports to that, I guess. Page twenty-two. For about two sections, probably back and then. Okay, or let's talk about your phone.
So. In the overview of my parts of looking at budget to one year. Four hundred and thirty could be four or one.
Which is each there twenty-three or three.
I asked for ten thousand, but in that description, obviously, we're monitors, portal radios, insurance, security cameras. Going up to the portal radios, I asked for seventy-eight hundred dollars. That's for two radios. Looking at what I have, I believe I can cut that down. The one radio was thirty-nine hundred dollars. The bike, the two of our Ken moved that thirty-nine hundred dollars I was at. To. Three, three, five hundred.
Okay, so you want us to reduce this amount by thirty-nine hundred dollars?
Yes.
And move it to your telephone?
Yeah, so the total would be, the new total would be two thirty to one hundred. Yes, and then just move thirty-nine hundred dollars into three, three, five zero. I figured. What I'm paying for Lintec. My hotspots, I should take that thirty million dollars from.
Okay.
And we. Super radio will basically give us a round that we can get away with one issue, permission, we should. So. If that's feasible, that would.
What is the insurance?
That's that company we utilized that we're not able to get. Insurance, you remember, we put the VAC note on you two years ago. Maybe they go and they bind the insurance information, all the information on base and.
Okay. So we didn't spend anything in twenty twenty-four, but I forgot my.
Well, I mean, what we done was we were. We were taking that, I believe, took it out of council. But for a little bit, then. I mean, ask if we need to quit doing that, then I think I asked an additional. Finish off a year of twenty twenty-four, so then in twenty twenty-five, I had budgeted to carry over in twenty-six.
Are they like on my name?
Yes.
Is that a contract or?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's either contract. And and they are. We're seeing turnaround on. Not keeping the insurance information from the people. How was?
Why is the jump old one?
So what I did is I put that in here. Propose that we had talks, I believe, rating on policy that can change proposed by the. Terrace Department. That would deter all the same days that can happen. Porthouse. So that's reflecting fifteen holidays. So what the courthouse does.
But the commissioners approve that and.
They did, but I put it in there, but we can change that if we're not wanting to utilize that. But I put that in there so you could see what the number would be if we were to observe a cavity hits.
That we, whatever commission decide and put into the handbook, the handbook, so.
Yes. And I think I, let me look here, I think I wrote down on my sheets. If we do not, if we just observe, observe the nine days, which that's what we, it is already approved. For twenty twenty-six. That would be ten thousand eight hundred dollars. So the fifteen set up that. If they don't approve. But I wanted to put it in there so you, because I think we, there was some discussion in some of the meetings. At Denise, she may remember, I can't remember, you kind of wanted to see what the numbers would be. And that's what the number would be if you got this.
That was ten thousand eight hundred.
At fifteen, it would be fifteen seven fifty, at nine, which we do now, it would be ten thousand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That sounds like something I would have.
But I think we all care to know what the number was.
So so your EMT advanced and B and paramedics, no, it's going to be same age earlier than.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really. Said in my, like what you said.
The the number of EMTs advanced, and EMTBs and the paramedics, the same number, probably each of the same.
Something to.
Yeah.
Yep. No change in that.
Oh, so did we have suddenly change from a. EMT advanced to an EMTB or because your salary went down on the EMT advanced, but it went up on the EMTB?
We do have one that's still waiting to do testing, so there's a potential that we may have five. Uh, the S T M Ts waiting on her during testing, so that would drop it and change.
Yeah, I had you go from four ninety-nine to five. Seven, ten.
That's what I worked through. Four advance, one to five, nine basics, one to seven. Nine paramedics.
Yeah, so right now I have four against seems he's present because one, she's still doing her testing, passing the machine, we need next year. Could be that, and then that would actually take her out, basically move her to the things. So that would be. We still have seven basic EMTs, five advanced into parameters. So over time, you know, that's a large number, that was base of objection, five percent raise. Now, obviously, that can change, you know, what you guys think you've seen on what raise percentage giving, that number can. Go down. And also, you also can know, as you're seeing this year, when individuals are taking time off. But I need to pick that over time, so. That number will be less there too. So yeah, I don't think you were here when I did the budget area and despite all thunder. They were all salaries under sixteen thousand. So used to the old way, the vacation said, and we changed that for any last year of our time. On there, so.
Vacation sick, that's part time.
Yeah, I remember we talked about that last year, today we scare for all of us to know. So my apologies. That's an oil thing I left alone. It's kind of crashy right now. I did reach out, I did talk to, finally got a chance to talk to. Bonnie. It's kind of highway reference to the state access tax. She gave me a individual to talk to, just to consult him if we utilize their best who she has talked to. Helped her go through the process to be able to give. Reimbursement money back, help for that exactly.
Yeah.
I don't know if it qualifies, but I'm gonna reach out to see if we do, and if we do. We utilize Keystone right now as a fuel tanking out of the out of the station. So that's the way we would be able to possibly get some reimbursement, that's all for that. Not from this certain counties, the county is already doing it. So our beers were stationed, trucks giving majority of all their fuel from your kind of highway. My trucks and add, uh, utilize that tank with it.
But if you're gonna, if they're finally for the FPT.
There, I might go all the files from that, I don't know, I'm gonna try and find you.
Well, what my thing, my point was going to be is it needs to be filed, then it needs to be split out because you pay for your fuel, you should get your reimbursement on the FPT. And the county gets their portion of that.
I don't know, she does that.
I mean, if you want to clean records.
But I don't know what they take off at the bottom, and she sent an invoice for that from from whatever you you always used to, we use for the loan. Bonnie sent me an invoice and I paid that, so I don't know if she deducts that off there. I'm not, I don't know, if you ask for the C.
Yeah, you need to find out, it needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, I can find that.
Yeah.
But I'm working on one from the out of the station to see.
Doesn't hurt, I mean.
So we talked about that, I was able to get a little bit of some guidance, so talk with Kim. We used off, they used us consulting from our reach out to him to see. Be involved by to be able to get some of that. Access tax to that. So that'll.
How many gallons do you think you use a year from the theaters? Because this forty-five is for Attic at the end theaters, correct? Well, the reason why I asked is, you know, we're gonna, we're talking about the county highway building. And you guys will go there and get your fuel, maybe you need to have your own tent there.
Definitely, so one thing we ran into with that is that's something we have to do some discussion was he looked at doing that. The first original went into that building. Because we don't buy a big enough volume, they were not going to give us a discount that they have given to the county highway. Because the county highway buys it in larger quantity, so they get a fair discount. And so that was one issue, the second issue where there is was the cost. Commissioners at the time, what looked at cost and they didn't trigger, see it was feasible with eighty-four. Water electricity. And all that instead of tanks versus driving down to the county highway, opening the gate, going there and get what?
Well, here's my thought is.
That was what I said.
The commissioners can look at how many gallons they buy a year. And it's not going to matter where those tanks sit. And if it's a bid process, the commissioner goes, we'll just go to the and put it out there, we need a bid on, you know, two hundred thousand gallons.
What I was going was was how it's going to be transported, they bring it on semis into there, whereas they bring it in on tandem axle. That's where, that's where the difference was.
Bringing the transport was necessarily cheaper if you have this storage capacity than bringing it on a tank. It's.
I'm not saying we can't look at that, I'm just telling you that's where it was.
Because they had that.
Is there a way, because you might know this, is there a way to put, I mean, there's obviously a keypad on there, right? Is there a way for them to punch in their key, their code and get a separate ticket?
Uh, we're at the. State I work.
Yeah.
Okay, they do, you know, it separates it out, so we have each one of my employees has a specific code. And she has that on the list, and it will separate, they do, they have it separate out. So they'll separate out our fuel usage, what the county highways. And then she gathers all that information and then. And the cost and all that, and she has titles all of it, it's just. But it's it's a keypad system, so basically you go in, you put in username or user code, and we have to put in truck code. And then the mileage, what tank, you go over tank for you us.
So that means he should, they should be able to generate a bill for me.
Uh, as far as keeper.
Like say Keystone, he's doing, I don't know, it's like Keystone.
What they do is it's all, it's it's what is utilized out of tanks. So they use ten, if there's ten thousand gallons used out between all of us. Then there's a little sentence with her, and she has to separate out. Or they separate it out higher than they do, I don't know if she does or they do.
There's gotta be a way that they can get the same price and do all that, but.
If we're doing.
They are getting.
Same price right now. But I don't.
Sex and prices.
I don't know if you were, when, whether when you would decide to move to the new location. We were to set several tanks at our facility. Would we get the same price as what they're giving us here? We were told. This was back when Don and Greg broke the commissioners, we looked into that. When we got to all of the costs that they put together, it was just better believe that going down the county highway could run out.
That was kind of a series that wants to be solved, so.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And if there is still, if you give me had a thousand gallon tanks, if their tank reimbursement is going to be higher.
Yeah.
But but if.
They're gonna give any on the cross deposit.
But if the tanks are sitting side by side, they just have their own tanks, so they can have their own billing, but they're both down there at the highway building. They bring a semi tanker in, he pumps it into the one tank and then turns around, pumps it into their tank and he's gone. Can they do that?
But they're gonna have to have a tank that's holds a ten thousand gallon.
So that's what brings me back to, I wonder how many gallons you actually use there.
I can look it up, I understand that, yeah, I'm on the head.
I don't know, I'm just trying to make it clean, I guess.
Eighteen nine of that, that's all we will.
Turn of that?
All that, maybe. I don't know, I didn't write them up and see. This year since summer, it's seventy, brought top of head, it came out.
Yeah. Just wait if you have a free moment.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to anything else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, how kind we didn't budget any money for, we began once for twenty-six. Because we spent twenty twenty-four, there was none. Twenty twenty-five, so. The sixth, we'd be here for.
We never put it in my budget. We never put that in there, you just taken it out of like. You got developed or whatever it was.
Those year, twenty twenty-four was taken for the four, four, six, and it runs three hundred and eighteen thousand nine dollars.
That was because we knew it was we bought in twenty twenty-two. And so we heard the lead, when those came in in August of of twenty twenty-four, that's what we found. You put it in there for that because we knew we were getting delivered to those in twenty twenty-four.
So we don't have any. Many budgeted for next year for any folks that have their any.
And.
Did you get that out of town or for, or how?
We were able to aid county park with that. And we did kind of general, but we did. Was out of. Ambulance general funds, but.
I think it was a discussion that you were, you were, you were trying to get back on that every other year, which will be twenty twenty-six. Which I need to know, but will be around two hundred thousand. Uh, I don't know, I don't recall where decision was of how, you know. How we're gonna run budget back. Uh, but the reason it was intentional twenty-four is is. We had carried that and we knew we were gonna pay out, because we paid. Three eighteen out of budget, and then we paid three twenty-three out of another line item, which we needed and having developed and received it. And right now there's money setting there, I think it's, and there's a two forty-five. But we had to cover that, that's for the rebound. Two sixty-five something.
Well, I guess the bottom line is though, we have. No money budgeted for twenty twenty-six for any, under any film.
Or no, I, I, to my knowledge.
We advertised that under any.
I haven't seen it anymore.
And what's the timeline I'm getting into, and let's now.
Well, that's where I was explaining earlier, um, you can, um. You can use, it's called Sourcewell, it's a company that helps with the bidding process. Um, like I was playing earlier, um, Jason uses it right now, utilizes them to help with the bidding process for the buying equipment. Um, we can utilize that company and basically we just contract with them. And basically they already got contracts pretty established, so we don't have to do the whole system where we had to. Send bids out to the city bill system, all that, they will take all that for you. Um, we can utilize that and go with a pre-bill. Ambulance, which means we can give potentially a quicker turnaround. With that, pre-bill is basically, it's a standard for bill for ambulance. You can make small modifications to it, still be all right. And have a lot quicker. If you go and what if we did it in twenty twenty-two, the traditional way, the custom bill and all that. You're like a late twenty twenty-seven, some twenty-eight before you go travel.
Yeah.
And so my suggestion is this go to pre-bill. Go with the Sourcewell program. Utilize them. So they can do a big, do the bid process for us. And we go with a pre-bill. Make some minor changes to the head act interior of it, which will be compatible with what we got down. And at the time, we're looking at around four hundred thousand dollars per fee. Now, subject to change, that was. If we got trucks in January, February, it may be too late for that, I can reach out to him and find out. It may be pushed to late twenty twenty-six. Or even maybe early twenty twenty-seven. The good thing is we're getting the rebound. So that's gonna help a lot. To get it in that, in the fleet. So that's gonna help us a lot, if. We feel we can't get anything. Twenty twenty-six, we might go get some for the twenty twenty-seven. And that looks just very close.
I mean, it's. Everything seem good running order right now?
Yes. Yes, it is, I mean, we're having minor things, but overall, yes, we're, we're, you know, we're doing very well, um. We've got ones, given us a little bit of some challenge with the deficit of them, but I think we're. Got better understanding of it, what year is yours? Twenty eighteen. That's the old, that's the old right now. Well, yes, sir, well, back up, I have a twenty fifteen, but that was going in on a trade. For the rebound, so the next one will be as long as twenty eighteen, never works with, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Just. Trying to get one, we need to get it before. Senate Bill one takes effect in twenty twenty-seven, because we don't know what. So.
So he needs to be thinking about ordering one then, because you said, if we wait twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, getting all many workers in.
We might get on that word that's coming in January, but worrying, but I don't know. I have to find out from you first.
Once you find out. You know, we have this information. The vehicle's on the mileage and then.
Plus to me to. Into twenty twenty-four, yes, and so right now, I just, I got. The twenty fifteen. The twenty eighteen.
To remount.
Yeah, and twenty fifteen's going away here, hopefully in this month.
Three males.
Twenty-four, I think it's twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five.
Those rebound will be out.
At least a minimum of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Okay. So that means you get that three twenty twenty.
Yes. And then the twenty twenty two and twenty eighteen.
So there are the twenty eighteen.
That would be my next one that I want to get rid of. Then we can really start seriously looking at rebounds. Because the boxes that I'm buying are important, it's really. Basically, we have. Set down from the top line and they're built to be rebounding. So that twenty twenty two is a rebound, it's on second rebound, it could probably be rebounded again. So we get rid of that twenty eighteen, we could look at the twenty twenty two and rebound it again. And then two twenty twenty fours, we definitely be rebounding. The present, the the remount we have, I was confused, the present remount is there now, it's a lifeline box.
Awesome, what's the difference in price of, what's our rebound?
Uh, we're looking at that. Well, the rebound we have right now is two forty five, I need one's four hundred.
So probably now we might be wanting to two sixty or two seventy five, really?
Anything possibly.
Less than three hundred probably.
I did increase the medical supplies a little bit. Uh. Five thousand dollars, um.
That's probably given.
I, I, that's out of my control, we're doing, Josh is doing a phenomenal job, and this is my medical supplier. He's watching it with these, these vending machines that we've got, it helped tremendously. But at the end of the day, the cost on the supplies that. Will no loss. Memphis, out of our control.
That's the sign of the times.
The big one I put in there was the medical director, he's having to three hundred in special services. Uh, you're gonna see a ten percent increase. Um, we're, we're, we're hitting on lucky with that. Most of your medical directors can buy ten thousand dollars, most will be ten thousand dollars. The positive is our medical director is here in the county. Um, he's down on the future program. He loves doing any, he's almost sending out some visits. So, of course he went. He bought more us.
My humble idea.
So. Yeah, so. Um, I said we took care of the telephone. Now, so in. Whatever repairs. I live alone. People will be okay, I know our workers will have another year age line, that people will be not home, it will be alright. Keeping a lot of the work in house has been very instrumental and it's called just honestly. Or some things have to go out. And you understand that a lot of it's like changing the warning lights out on it, we can do it in house, we don't have to send it out. And so that's helpful. Postage, uh, there was a little bit of an increase there. Uh. Obviously it's without.
We're gonna do.
Yet you're still a course session.
That's crazy.
It is. Um. And then in my capital outlets, obviously, I originally said two thirty six, remember six thousand, reset to thirty two. In that. Is proposed to continue your G one with the process and replacing monitors and cops. Or. If we. Want to seriously look at that. EMS plus program. Uh, I can add prices on that, go that way, or we can. Go on that process, you know, replace them. I know there's. And also one of the advantages is with that. Is you remember right last year, because our number one hourly threshold of a hundred and fifty thousand, we had to do so big process. Because if we require a source well. We can bypass that and we do not have to do that, we do not have to do that, so the process with equipment. We can utilize them when they have that very established, so if we decide we want to do that, fine, if not. Then we can continue on replacing. And continue paying five to ten percent every year, or the increase every year. That's how I was doing, I'm not saying five or seven. So each year, all that goes up by seven percent. So you'll see the pricing now continue to grow up. I also put it in there, of course portable radios, we cut down. There's a cost in there for furniture, we do for furniture replacement at both stations. Uh, that was around ten thousand seven hundred dollars. And then. I put in here, uh, we've not done this, always should have, we talked about it in the budget hearing. Um, security cameras with the Verbius station. Uh, I got a call from, um. Brad Keller on that, it was ninety five hundred dollars. So that's under that four four one oh one, I, it does probably labeled in there, it gives you one month number, doesn't it? So that's my break there, I wanted to tell you about two thirty two one hundred is gonna be. Is the two oh eight of the modern cars. Thirty nine hundred dollars for one portable radio. Ten thousand seven hundred dollars for the furniture. And ninety five hundred dollars for the security cameras. I think it was, I remember I, we looked. Yeah, about twenty five cameras. And they're outside and inside. So two oh eight on the monitors and bus.
And then thirty nine for radio.
Thirty nine hundred, if we did that, we could get away with one eighty.
Ten seven for furniture.
Yeah.
And then ninety five hundred for one hundred, okay.
I said I, I, I put it in a moment, dollars and five percent, but obviously this, this, this would be. So that would change. Depending on what you side. Obviously, that's gonna change the number respective deals or amount. Or.
Any other questions for?
Elections are up. I think I told you guys, I think, I think. Pat and I sit down, and with a. Her, her goal was a million. We're gonna be close. Not sure we'll get there, but we're gonna be very, very close, that was one of her goals. I knew that kind of was. We're gonna be. Sixty. I mean, fifty sixty thousand and then the frown more than we were last year. Um, but. The drawback is insurance is tougher, it's a, it's very challenging to deflect, some of them will. Will have a balance, will send it to the insurance, the insurance will track it, we don't pay him. And we'll send it to the patient and by the time we get sent to the patient, then we give them. She's sometimes sixty days later. And so it gets, it gets very tough. And it's always across the board, this is your private. Worthful. Nothing's.
Yeah, the recorded collections we got from the meeting said seven hundred and thirty eight thousand nine hundred and seven years to date. Elections and that was dated.
So she died, she can avoid seven or eighty, um, the next three months she'll be. She's. She's gonna do that. Right numbers, we're like. Staying that as well, I mean, I think we're numbers being down a little bit, but. That's just talking. I talked to other industries, probably companies around us, there's some that are open and that's down. I'm thinking of order the biggest year, so it's. Prepareable to us. Yeah, you can't look at it like we're counting. Well, they run eighteen rounds and four are green. But anything else?
Yeah, uh, our air ambulance service, can you tell me, and maybe it's been said before, what percentage of air ambulance service? Is being conducted by one we contract them versus?
So you mean how many times we use them?
Well, okay, so they say we needed a hundred.
Hundred lines.
Yeah, a hundred lifelines, how many of our service? One we contracted with, do you know?
Fifty percent, seventy five percent.
I'm gonna say literally sixty percent maybe. That's just set off on my head.
And, and the people, the forty percent have to pay that.
It depends on. Yes, now in the end run, if you, so for example, like lifeline, or if we utilize lifeline. You don't get a bill for lifeline, it's included in your hospital. So when you get your hospital bill for IU, it's included in that price. So you won't know, and it does, what I understand is it won't say specifically helicopter ride.
Yeah.
You know, I think it says like other services. Now, I can't speak for your life, champagne. Uh, we don't use them a lot, but we do utilize them, can't speak for them, or area evac, which is out of Brazil. Uh, sometimes we use those two. Um, and then. Staff life's getting better, uh, I mean. As you guys asked that question, always whenever it was. It's a stabbing issue. Maybe, as I said, for is it staff, there's feedback I'm getting, and.
And the role of staff.
Um, yeah, they're, they're. Now staffing. Falling, it's not quite as sharp as what it was. But I think a lot, like you have to look, there is, is you have new blood coming in. I mean, it's in any, it's in any industry. And we can experience that in our industry, you know, uh. You know, with new blood, not having the experience. You know, you hope that you can hire people that have a lot of experience, but. That, that does not always work. Um, I know they have recognized it, they're, they, they have been told. And, and then people in. State Indiana has spoken about it, so they, they put it on their high alert, so they're. They're already people in from Texas to West Virginia. So to, to get that trust back. Um. To, to help with that, but yeah, they really go, they really do. Situation. So. I'd say it's in sixty percent of, seventy percent of. But it goes back to what we once said. It's on their battle, that's, yeah, I think it's a lot. I mean, I, my suggestion is, is I think, not the oils, in that month, shut up, is. I give them another year. I think next year, I think you need, you can read the highway, get a look at it, see, you can, they'll give you the number, we'll look at all that. When we come back for that contract, guys can make up a decision if you wanna stay with it. I give them another year, give them this opportunity to give their. Feedback on the ground of the people. I think they're trying.
Yes, they're all.
See, maybe they'll make the else regard.
Uh, your lungs. So are you guys gonna meet next week? Do you need me here? On the fourteen? Okay. Well, if I do, I've got your plans, but I can change, but meeting here, I'll come back again.
We'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright.
Thanks, have a good one.
All right, the fourteen, we're on the finalize.
I don't think we got made.
I don't think we're getting to the winner, because I think we need. Yeah, to turn this out, a new sheet. What changed the way, and then, yes, and then see what.
See now.
Cause I know you guys have made some tests, I've seen some things that I may need to be fed, but I don't know if you've already done that. Um.
Yeah, if we get one of those long sheets, then we can go right. We can say this is what we did, and yeah, that's right.
Um, and then I, I do have a question about the art. Many. This. Twenty twenty five, we. Economic development. That's very last page. The two thirty four, six nine four. They spent all of that this year. As we zero, we got no budget for the next year. And. They had this. Spent it by this year.
They're. You poking Reagan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're intending to, the. Wega has Donovan. Contracted to do the outside of the building. Re-reinforce the inside, do the floors, rub and do all the outsides, get all that done. And they're going, they're using that our money. Uh, to pay for that, so they'll use it up before the end. This is.
Okay, so then my question is on the capital outline. Our budget twenty twenty five was one million three hundred and eighty seven thousand two thirty two. This year it's one million five hundred and four seven nine.
So you're wondering what that difference is, aren't you?
Yes.
Me, I did too.
Because we can't, uh, we can't change what we approved in twenty twenty five unless that includes. The money that I'll need put into the wrong account.
Three hundred thousand.
So I need to know. Yeah, that was three hundred thousand, so that, that doesn't, uh. That adds up only two hundred and four thousand. Confused. Cause we can't.
You can't have that money later.
That we had to decide what money was gonna be spent by the end of last year, and we can't change that.
So we need to find the resolution where we declared, while we were.
Right.
Decide what we're gonna use the expense for, because it'll say in there a specific number. I thought the same thing, where did that extra money come from?
Yeah, cause. We can't, uh.
I know that.
The federal government, we couldn't change, we hadn't made our final decision. Summer thirty third, and that's. We had such a hard time getting that worked out.
Yes.
Set the, the money, and, and I'm okay if it's.
And what you got.
It'll get the state, I mean. Probably didn't look the money in the right account, and really had. And that's easily fixed, if we. Get rid of the whole shooting bags.
Right, and we didn't adopt a budget for twenty five, that was the number that missed there.
Yeah.
That was, that was the balance at the time.
So. So you're talking about the two hundred and three thousand.
Cause we can't. We can't, can't change this from twenty twenty four. Yeah. So.
Was that the money possibly that was left over from Hillsboro that they ended up not needing all of it? I didn't think it was that much.
But you took that money and put it in the, uh, for the, uh. Uh. Highway.
Well, we were supposed to do that.
And we didn't have anything budgeted for this year for Hillsboro, so that would have.
That would have been zero value, right?
Yeah, that would have been zero value.
For the soon project down in.
Yeah.
Right, there was a good.
Was this like one D E or something?
I think it was two hundred and seven.
So maybe that's the money, it just didn't get.
But it had to be set. Twenty twenty five.
Yeah, it came back to us in twenty four.
But I think. Three hundred thousand most.
How much was that? One million? One million two hundred and thirty thousand. That doesn't even matter. What are those two evil debies?
What was left from town Hills, but what was without the special housing, I think that was just one, one land three eighty-four forty-two December. That's saying that, I don't know, that was, was getting to us, and you talked pretty long before, but it was saying there was three nineteen seven thirty-three left for the data. This is showing two thirty-four, so. Usually off. Something's changed that I doubt this.
While she's looking at that, I wanted you to look at, in the back there. Uh, human cap commissioners.
What is that?
Well, you can look to it here. Forty-nine. Page forty-two, and that backs this lady's assumption. They're gonna see a decrease on computer maintenance. He left off as zero. Yes.
We had a circle Y, no?
Let me say it again, Kelly, on.
Page forty-two, under computer maintenance.
Yeah.
He left off of zero, it should have been seventy-two thousand and not seventy-two hundred.
So, well, advertised the whole weekend. So, if there's anything that we do about.
That I told him, I said, if it was advertised that way, there's nothing you can do about it, you'll just have to make up the difference from a another fund.
Yeah, or. Do an additional out of this one.
Right.
Things we have to.
Exactly. Exactly.
So the.
And we can do, and we do that, we have to wait until after January to do any additions.
Yes, the, yeah, that's.
They will not let us do any additions in January, we have to get started until February, and I think there's actually a date that agree that, yeah, we have to go by.
And they'll send us one.
Yeah. So can we, at that time, when we can do additions, can we additional the 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 extras needed all at one time? I think we can.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But I, there's. Three automobiles. In the budget for next year. I thought we did two a year, but. So. We might be able to. We take one of these automobiles out of human cap development, and take, put that on the. Then we're not over our, um. And then if we decide to do a third vehicle, we can do an additional later and.
Or we could take the human cap monitor. Computer maintenance.
Well, when, when is your fee for your? Program, that for lack, do you have wow or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And so is that for wow?
Yeah, uh.
Exactly.
So do you think those three vehicles are for? The sheriff's department for their three vehicles that? They would like to train. One of them is that Dodge Durango, and one of them is a Tahoe that they have to disconnect the battery because they have electrical issues with it. The third one, I can't tell you, I think it's age and mileage.
Two Towels, one, they want two Towels. And they can get them from split deals. Who I think.
And then they have to be flatter than outfitted. Yeah, initial check, he has been with forty-five. Yes, and they said they're trading now, they can get a pretty good value out of their use.
I feel they do December, eight, or now that one of these now, but.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, yeah.
That way we can. Because I, I think our, our human capital development. From, can't already even see it.
Is there all three ready right now, they're sitting on, is it Kelly one, Tom, was it Kelly?
Kelly Chevrolet.
In Fort Wayne, yeah.
I don't see.
They were fooled that I said.
I advertise them. I am not seated to take it out of next year, it goes out next year.
Reimburse back. Can we do it that way?
Yeah, because our, our seat is, it looks like, say, we, our seat has started. The year was six hundred and seventy-three thousand, and for some reason, we only budgeted two hundred and eighty-one out of that. And getting two twenty-five additional, as we're not spending all of that, so.
No, and we're, we only spent eighty-seven five this past week.
Forty.
A hundred and seventy-five.
Thousand, so we're gonna have a million dollars in that account. For. January one, and I don't know how much did we advertise for, I see that for. Twenty twenty-six.
I'm gonna spread that stuff. Use it on every instance.
So we're gonna have to go out of county to get these serviced to keep the warranty.
I'm sorry, I was thinking when you spoke.
Oh, no, the Tahoe is a truck. We don't have a city either in Rapid County anymore, so.
No, they said they can go to, is it?
Linton.
Barb Shovel.
Or.
Or they can go up to Henland.
Oh.
Or they can go.
Nothing in the county, though, it's crazy.
Or property stills.
But GM, for sure, Germany.
But I wonder if they can go to GM and lock yet.
I would think so.
I think they can. If they did wanna go to the.
I mean, less Allison is still certified to work on cans, but I don't think they.
No, I don't think they are.
That's fortunate.
They can change the oil, they can. So. Oh, um, yes, so, and Todd was there too. We had a structural engineer from Kelly Construction, is that correct, Todd, was it from Kelly?
I wasn't here that day. We went, we went to the cracks.
Yes.
Bill just spent it on there, right, because it was not structural.
It's not, it's not a structural crack, they looked at the one in the treasurer's office too, they do not structural cracks, they happen to sit on. The, uh, low buried walls, so that just created the flex, it was almost like a flex crack. And so.
Should have been a control joint there, during construction process, many years ago, they didn't put one in.
Like.
Control joint just means. This is where it's gonna crack, that's all it means. You got a joint there, so.
So the gentleman suggested, um, injecting, uh, like an epoxy type substance to. Raise it up and release that crack a little bit better, and then then said, or, uh. Some sort of leveling compound to create that more level appearance that you could afford it. And I think Bill ended up putting that thing set down. Bill Carrack and.
That's good.
Yeah, oh, it was wonderful, it was great to hear that it was not a structural issue, because that would have been a free site. Yes.
To definitely find for Florida, not structural, so they're enforcing, not removing. I know.
And then he did look at the ceiling in the extension offices too, because. They had a, they thought it was coming through the ceiling, or coming through the floor, into the ceiling of the extension office, and it was not, because that was a. Moisture problem that caused that sag. So. And we jokingly said to the young gal setting them meet that sag, that maybe she shouldn't sit there, because that's where the safe sits. So, but it's not, we were just joking with her, but, um, so. The safe is going to be moved. Where, uh, I think Aaron is gonna ask if there was another. Office in the county that needed it.
Oh, they didn't get that out there.
Bill said he can move it.
Help me. Oh, I thought it was, so you said it doesn't.
Oh, no, they moved it out of the way, I mean, it's big, it's it's awful.
Yeah, it's heavy.
And it's heavy. But Bill said they're bringing in, I didn't see that, he said they should bring it in on a dolly.
Um.
Not French, like, or.
No, the. Oh, the scanner that scans your body.
Yeah, the scanner that scans our body, they're gonna bring it in, he said, why I have the dolly out, I can go up and get it, bring it down.
On what, the outdoor?
I guess.
Throw it down the stairs.
Alvinudo.
I, I'm sure that they.
But she got a safe. And when she ordered the safe, she inadvertently ordered one that is not fireproof, so she's going to need to order a different one. That is fireproof. So. The. She, they, she, so, yeah. Yeah, I asked.
So if you find out what.
Yeah.
It's here, what's?
Yeah, um. Uh, we advertised four thirty-four nine seven seven.
Okay, so we're gonna have. I, I'd say. Interesting. When, when you have a site, maybe for the healthcare, or said the additional, yeah, that's the additional.
Yes, yeah, but.
Three vehicles out of. Why you have a capital, yeah, I mean, you have a C has, I would. Everybody, yeah, no, we had, we put those vehicles, and we can take that and we're up.
Go ahead and do that now.
Yeah, I still have to get a hold of it, I still have to get a hold of it. Actually, Andrew. And he may not have a figure yet.
Did it take me serious? Oh.
But I think he was. Able to, to get.
Okay. I'll find out, and then I'll get that. Do it now.
Yeah.
I had your question. And plus, and that will for yet, or we can. Give that direction.
Yeah.
Okay, where do you guys wanna go next? Besides.
Well, without knowing what all the changes are.
Is hard. Do, do we wanna look at nine one one? She, she's got a lot of, maybe this is one where we need to have a command, because I've written a lot of notes. But it seems like it's pretty straightforward on the end.
Yeah, I mean. For actual services.
I am from when we met with her previous under uniforms and other on page twenty-four, she reduced that to thirty-five forty.
Correct.
Okay, then I have.
Like, wait a minute, page twenty-four, where did she reduce?
She reduced uniforms and other.
They're what?
Three thousand five forty.
Three thousand five.
And then under IDAX. Increase that to four hundred and sixty dollars, so, or increase that by four sixty to make that four thousand three hundred. And then under contractual services caliber. She gave us a breakdown of what the jail is responsible for. That isn't included in this. Remember, we asked her to break that apart, she got one bill.
I hope the jail said it wasn't.
And it, yes, I think he said he put it in theirs, so let me go look for it to make sure.
Our assistance, three thousand, or what, you didn't have any position.
But their portion is eighteen thousand seven seventy-six for the jail.
Uh, Tom, you hear?
Well, I think he said he included it.
It wasn't included in her budget, she thought she needed to increase it, but then the sheriff had a sudden scream hits. So I don't know if she needs to. Right. He has seven contractual services, that is for thirty-four thousand four seven eight, but maybe it's more than that.
Thousand, none of them, sure, calories.
Three thousand seven seventy-six, portion of the jail. He said it's, I don't think it'd be personal.
No, no.
Would we even promote one, right?
Seventy-four.
One eighty-one. One thing under equipment, she has sixty thousand there, and the reason why is because she needs two. Two new P S apps at fifty-nine thousand forty-six dollars.
Not fees total.
That's total.
Two new stations.
Yeah, two new P S apps, equaling fifty-nine thousand forty-six dollars. And one would be needed for a third dispatcher, dispatcher slash training, but she did not put that in here because. She can be taking her lead up right now.
Once she need eighty thousand for repair and maintenance.
Motorola, they increased their costs, and she needs new grade, radio, new something. She's going to replace. S- something there. I didn't write down just motorola increased.
Or she got from.
On page seventy-one. Course the bottom.
The warm count is signed a agreement.
Uh, no, I talked to Robin, that she's working on it.
Then you gotta remember, equipment's not.
Right.
Not in that. They're not in half that. But they did increase their fee. Was there any change to the fee that you could read them?
Not that I can think of.
What was proposed from them? Is that what you got to do? Yeah. New headsets or something, she said, I thought that.
There you go.
And I think that nineteen thousand that she increased on part-time is more true and accurate, because she was, she was less this year. If I remember right, she. Oh, these are for the consoles, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
And these are for the consoles, the P S.
Just let you know what it's, yeah.
This is what she's looking at giving, so. And it's market order two.
All right.
It's a quote, you get an extra. Is everybody a company? Everybody.
Are you gonna fit in that part of the unit there?
I hope so.
Yeah, but you had a new bill, and, or it's gonna cost to.
I don't know.
The same thing, right? There's two properties.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lady, let me just.
Your sports.
Yeah, well, two P S apps side by side. I don't, it's not. But it's seven feet on the arc. So what is it from the center to the edge? I guess you can buy that, you know. That's forty-two inches roughly. Just say it's fifty inches. We've got to do. I'm seeing one by twelve. It's roughly eight, that's about eight and a half feet. So that there should be room in there.
This is from May twenty-eighth, doesn't it sound about converted days or?
It may be a little more than what it is now. Unless you can. State your case with them and. Anyway, that's what that's for. It looks like uh she's requested twenty-eight thousand for overtime because if you remember right, she didn't have overtime in there last year. I think she came and talked to you about her budget. And you you helped assist them with that and you.
Yes, that we then figured out. For employees vacation, say first of all days and somebody, so. They could figure that out, so.
Right. Now.
And now she's lost a couple of people. Humans can't work by themselves, so she has to pay. Some to work to. The employee.
Right. I know that she said uh that Ian, one of the E. E M Ts came over. Yeah, one of the E M Ts is now working for nine-one-one. And then um page seventy-two. They're gonna increase the part-time to reflect a better number. And overtime as well. And that is it for nine-one-one. And she did budget for the floater position. On page twenty-four.
Sure. Those three pages. Are over ninety dollars.
Now, take, you gotta take out what Warren County takes us. I think it's three seventy-five, I believe.
Well, it's three seventy-five, six twenty-five plus seventy additional.
That's still, that's still.
Yeah, four hundred thousand.
Is that what it is? I think that's that was the project, the first proposed.
Yeah.
I just know what it looks like when you get it out of there. Not a lot. That's part of the problem. I mean, that's part of the problems.
Yeah. So after Warren County's. Payment, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand. Plus any additional. Okay, do we want to look at the health department?
For the health department. So H F I.
In half, in half, like we think it was in half. I don't think it was set completely.
One thousand four forty-four thousand don't you have five minutes safe?
Um, yeah, since that's just one hundred thousand four forty-five, so.
She was on there too.
Yeah, and then he's still on, yeah.
She went. The counties part did not go up. I mean. Five one eighty percent.
Yeah.
Considering what they were fast on the H F I.
She's done a good job of it. I mean, the other one increased. Because.
Well, the thing I see is largely the uh. The H E P grant or major. With about twenty-five percent.
Because they no longer did grant.
So bad.
Um, that's probably the salad, so that Lucy said. The grant of twenty-five thousand ten thousand.
And then I had, this includes a five thousand dollar increase as a minimum. Because of that.
My only concern on that, but we're about to jump to mission and do a lot of this, but we have it for the brand. It's not going to be.
Yeah, it's not reflected.
To what we should pay. Or. I don't have.
So then that brings me back around to that. Right. So definitely that brings me back to using that fund to pay for the repairs. Would we be better served to use that fund to pay the rent? I mean, it's one, six of one, half a dozen of another, I guess, but. Right. Unless you can only use it for rent and you can't use it for repairs.
That.
Right. They may come back and say that you can't use that for. Building repairs or whatever, but they may say, but you can't use it on rent. And if that's the case, I mean, we just have to wait to see, but hey, Jenny, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, my goodness. Do you think that that? Fund that you were gonna use for repairs, I know we had to get state approval, but. Do you think they would use it for rent?
I can't really answer that because previously we've always paid rent out of eleven fifty-nine rather than eleven sixty-eight or twelve oh six. Um, so I can't, I can't answer that.
Okay. You might ask him that question.
Okay.
Just. For reference, just in case.
I would rather see these for the repairs.
Me too. It's a one-time bill and.
Now we're gonna repair it the next year.
Right.
Right now, the next year. The same state of the parents this year.
Yeah, but it says that's been replaced and. What do you say? Established.
You guys thinking?
Crazy, you're.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions on that. I just. Where the that friends for the day she was.
Right. And and Jenny, Jenny expressed that. She was concerned about that. Because she didn't know. It's an unknown.
Okay.
It means that she has rental buildings H F I sixty percent and then H F I thirty percent.
So one thing to keep in mind on this H F I and even um any funds that are left over from twenty twenty-five. Is that sixty percent has to go directly towards nursing or clinical side and then forty percent uh towards environmental. And even moving forward past um twenty twenty-five. That money still has to be allocated to that sixty forty split. Um, so it does get tricky. Um, but those are things that we have to keep in mind as we move forward and and as you seen with this budget, that's what I've tried to do as well is to try to. Um, keep it down to that, or I have to keep it to that sixty forty. Um. But those are things that we have to work with, you know, to receive these funding.
So then what you have down for rental on the buildings, the two, one sixty. One is at sixty percent, one is at forty percent. That's what you were gonna use for your rent or. Your current building, correct?
It was the current because at that time we did not have anything established and I had to submit this um. Um, budget, yeah, so. Uh, moving forward, I still can use that um as rent or where it needs fit. Towards that or I reallocate it um in a different section of the budget, but it will have to be a a sixty forty split. Um, we can spend more for clinical. But we can't spend. More for environmental, if that makes sense. We could spend seventy percent for environmental and only thirty percent. Sorry, seventy percent for clinical, but we cannot in uh thirty percent for environmental, but we can't do sixty percent environmental. They it it has, they can't do any more than um forty percent for environmental, if that makes sense.
Yep. No matter how the split is, environmental has to be less.
Yep, yep. And then I also added in there utilities um just as a a kind of a. A prep in case we were to move so that way I didn't have to create a new line. I think it was like three or four hundred dollars, but that line is already there. So if I need to reallocate some additional funds, um it's already established.
Yeah, I noticed that because you also did it on the liability insurance and.
Yes.
Everything. Any other suggestions or? Questions for Jenny? Thank you, Jenny.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Where are we going next, people?
Uh, harder until we did. They achieve. So we're talking about salaries and grossing.
I think we've done most. Then when we get the sheet, we could do a quick run through. Okay, so let me ask you this because. If we add an extra day on top of the fourteen. Do we have to advertise for that?
Well, every day.
No, it's a patient. Okay, so.
Yeah, I have a day for.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah, let's do it tonight.
I wish I had speech record.
So.
Is it obvious?
So you don't have the sheets ready?
Yeah, no.
Absolutely. I'll try to have him assume. Oh, no, maybe.
I was planning to try not to shake the ready course for the next.
I'll try to have him before then I'll, you know.
Because it's, we're doing a joint meeting with A C. Commissioners.
Eng commissioners.
Next week. With that, our fourteen.
It itself.
Yeah.
What do we have down that we're going to?
It, I thought it was the. Want to you. You had it wrote down. I don't have, I didn't read.
So are you saying we don't need another night?
Somewhere in there.
Well, we have updated sheets and we can kind of go through. Each department that see. Or we need.
And that gives you more of a chance to look at the the. Proposed uh salaries too and make a little notations on your your thoughts on them.
And you know what might be nice is to have. A sheet that has the proposed budget that was given to us. And then a sheet with. What changes we have made. I mean, I I know that's extra workable then. If you print out. Or have you already made changes on the budget? And then through this.
I can do it. I, no, I'll do it. It'd be easier to make it.
We have two sheets we can work in. One was proposed, then we start at one. Yeah, so we're.
Yeah. That's fine.
I, that's what I'm like changing.
So much just propose whatever we want to do.
Yeah.
Because when I got down there, you notice. Yeah. That's why I'm gonna send you guys last post message because I wanted to look at you and you look at what maybe some of the other counties. Which I thought was a. A good reference.
And that's why I heard it, A I C. Maybe was most accounts are wanting that two to three percent. Or they're doing a second.
My comment was second.
And the reason is because we have no idea. What S B one is going to do.
And then I think I told Charlie, I thought they told Jimmy, I mean. We got a great explanation about S B one at A C. Yeah, I don't know what our. Homes are assessed at in this county. But what they told us there is. When your homes assessed in the eighty thousand dollar range. You're not gonna get a tax break. We're taxed and you're gonna go. Almost double for S B one. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Assess value is worth this form seat being promised. And I don't know what. I I have no idea. I haven't talked to. Uh, Ember about. What our assessment, average assessment value of homes are in this county, but. They think there's some decent changes because. The counties that have. Lowest satisfying revenue seat.
You know, one thing is I'm.
So it's not.
One thing I would like to talk about, we did not talk about this. Uh, maybe we did, but definitely wasn't with us, was the assessors budget because it's all over this. When you look at this. She. And it's more towards the the physicians in the office because she wants to keep. The G S I mapping and she's going to wants to drop the rate. She's not gonna fill it right away, but she would like to leave that position because. She may need it. She's trying to wait to see when she gets into the work. If she's going to need that a person in that slot or not. And and if Amber's listening. And and if Amber's listening or watches this later, she can call me and correct me if I'm wrong. I hope I'm not.
Finally, you guys now. Okay.
Page seventy three.
Seventy three, thanks.
The G S I, G G S I, G I S mapping. I had a note here, she is not going to refill it right away, but she would like to leave it in the budget because she does not want to remove it in case. You know, she may need somebody. Later on. But she dropped the proposed salary for that. By almost a couple thousand dollars.
She just left it, right?
She left it and she left it at the forty, she put, I wrote down forty three, five sixty one. Right, cause she said, she said there will be a thirty eight thousand five hundred and seventy six dollar reduction in the South total salaries.
Yeah, that's what I had to.
That's what I I have, I have forty three, five sixty one, maybe I really don't. You're probably right, Ken.
She she wanted G I S mapping, she was gonna leave it forty five, three sixty one.
Yep.
The level reassess or this can be.
Completely.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, but then you get down here to the data collector. Remove it completely.
So the three of those were consistent, they're thirty five, they're thirty eight, five seventy six.
And and that budget, due assessment comes out of property tenants, ready for a two reassessment. And even involved this year, budget was spent. With company six hundred and thirty seven thousand starting January one. So. That has sort of us so. There won't be a problem if we leave. And she has the power, we leave it in there, who is? We've got enough more than enough.
Right, and then the savings that she's creating there helps to boost, help cover that.
That is something we may have to look at a couple of years because. We lowered. The back story of the assessments and. Bill out the county general. And um. That's something we. But uh. Lower the county general tax rate, then change this. Those were building up, so that's why three or four years ago, we looked at. Lowered those, building up county general, it's a. Because we weren't collecting enough in county general.
See, here's what you had. That we did, I remember that October fourth, I think it was last week.
Right, but I have a contingency date in there. Well, you probably don't have a contingency date. I was thinking it was like the twentieth or the twenty third, so maybe it's the twenty.
But if I don't have this budget, then I'm definitely not going, because I got. Yeah, remember, remember we. Cause you were trying to give me as much time as possible. I remember.
So we have another. That's what they said.
John called me and told me that I needed to advertise for his public hearings.
Yeah.
Then so.
I think he's really interested. It's it's.
Okay, the twentieth, the twentieth is gonna be the A P C commissioners and council. In the evening at six. In his public hearings.
So you've got that average place there and you're going to.
Yeah, I already sent it today.
Okay, so we have. With the. The twenty, the twentieth. We have a joint meeting at six P M. That is a Monday. October twentieth at six P M. On the fourteenth. We have a budget meeting at nine A M, that is a Tuesday, October fourteenth.
And we're meeting on Monday, so holiday.
That is correct. So. I I believe we need to have an additional meeting that that week. Ken has a. Conference to go to the week of the twenty seventh.
Well, we have to prove it, we.
Right, that's what I'm gonna get to, yeah, so um. So we have an additional meeting that week of the thirteen. Then on the twentieth, we can potentially approve that budget. On the twentieth, and that gives her that week to get everything loaded into the system and there before her conference. Does everybody agree with that?
So the fourteenth, we can look over all the.
That's right. And so do you think that would give enough time for us to do the fourteenth and one extra day to go over salaries? I feel confident. I do too. The sixteenth works for me and let's make. Let's make that an evening meeting if we can. That way you guys can do your work stuff and I have the S B O A exit interview. And of course, you all are invited to that.
What time are you?
That is at two P M. I think we should do like the five thirty or a five if you guys can. If you can, let me know. Five thirty works a little better, you don't, won't rush it probably.
We can start without.
How are you, Mr. Harper?
I'm just finishing up, so he's accusing on the twentieth, that's how I know. Sixteenth, the the evening?
Yes. Five thirty.
That'll be sound.
If you're if you're late, that's okay, I'm not worried about it.
Just bring some food.
I can do this.
Okay, so we are going to do. We're gonna do this Thursday, October sixteenth at five thirty. We have October fourteenth at nine A M.
Yes.
And we have the twentieth joint meeting at six P M.
So that gives Kim the Friday and Monday to get all the.
Yeah, no problem. I got this. Yeah, I'll work on that, so I'll try to get it to you within the next couple of days though.
And you can't do the fifteenth, right?
No. Yeah, it's her birthday, so.
What?
We're the same age.
Still baby. Okay, so I think we're all set. Anything else we need to discuss? Right, but since it's on the curb and you take it from center, that's forty two from left from center. Is it a text message or?
Look at overhead view, it's eighty four, eighty three inches.
Oh, wow, it is, isn't it? I wonder if she realizes whether that will work or not. I'm not dissuading her, I just wanna make sure she has.
Did that guy actually come here and measure?
I have no idea. Are there three in that room now?
No, she's, she she has a small in her.
Oh, she does have one in her room, yeah.
The big ones are. In that room, on the wall, but. There was that closet storage space.
Over here.
Yeah, so I guess. There was a, it doesn't look like it's. Fourteen feet, but.
I wonder if she's gonna set one over by the windows and then put one over here, so they're not really back to back with their. It'll it'll.
The company's out of New York, I mean, is the price even any good? I mean, freight may be higher and all that good stuff, but yeah. Freight was four grand and the installation was three, that could all be different, but. Yeah, six months, four months.
Right.
Could be. I would guess probably, I would say, yeah.
Did he uh guarantee?
Yeah, his name's Louis, he's from New York.
All right. Denise made the motion to recess, may I get a second, Dudley second in that, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Louis LaRouche.